All right, I'm gonna, all right, we are recording.
Okay.
And I'm gonna welcome us, let me see, to the ordinance committee meeting of December 11th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM, all of us are present. Uh, we have one piece of continuing business on our agenda, which is the review of the LED sign and electronic messaging center sign ordinance. Um, I think both of you saw the informational, um, things I sent over, there was a model ordinance. Um, you know, a lot of the stuff I found was from Pennsylvania. Um, you know, I think we're, I was looking through North Hampton, I was looking through some local communities, there's not a lot of local sign ordinances that address electronic messaging centers. It just, it just doesn't exist. They still are on like, you know, overhanging signs over sidewalks and stuff, like that's about as deep as they go. Um, you know, so, uh, what I did was I took a crack, since it's been a while since we had talked about this. Um, I did take a crack at, um, looking at some of the pieces that we had talked about last time, that we wanted to kind of add in some of the time, place, manner stuff. Um, I also took the liberty of just pulling it out, um, our language out, and so we can kind of edit it as we go, if we want. Um, you know, and I think, uh, to, to start it, I think one of the things that we're gonna have to grapple with is the, the essential question, which is, do we want to allow these other places besides the mill industrial district?
Sure.
And so, and then if we can, you know.
We were still going over the internet.
No, 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 but that's fine, because I need to, like, I feel okay with that.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that, like, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to rework this ordinance, if none of us feel that it makes sense for these things to exist in East Hampton. Um, you know, because the way the ordinance was written initially was basically you had to have 100,000 square feet, and it was only the mill industrial.
Right.
So, that is so prohibitive, nobody could have one.
Right.
Um, you know, so basically what I did was, this is, this, the first part of this, kind of anticipating that we might be okay, was, um, this is section 10, um, which is, uh, electronic messaging centers, EMCs, shall be limited to mill, uh, or I'm sorry, mixed-use mill industrial, downtown and highway business districts only. So basically, said downtown business, highway, and mill industrial are the only places these can exist, which, the reason why I chose those three zones, there are commercial zones A, and they're not residential B, because that brings us into like, if you have these signs in residential zones, you have the kind of issues of light pollution, you have the issues of where zones kind of straddle, it can become difficult with neighbors, so I just, I felt like, cause neighborhood business could potentially be included in there, but that is tricky, just because you do have so many neighbors, and that might be disruptive if you have a light shining through your front window, or across the street, or whatnot. But I'm happy to hear thoughts on that, to discuss it, to debate it. What do you guys think?
Neighborhood, but I'm just trying to think, we, we only have a handful of neighborhood businesses.
And they're pretty adjacent to downtown, but they are also pretty residentially.
Right. I mean, I would even, I'd be fine saying that we're gonna allow them in the commercial areas, and I, I could even take it a step forward to say that in other zones, like, we could allow my special permit or something, so that's like, if you have a specific, I mean, I think about, my street is not highway business, but there are some businesses along the way. And, um, if, say, the kitchen people, that are two houses away from, you know, two addresses away from me, wanted to put something like that in, I, I wouldn't personally have an issue with it, but given that it is mostly a residential area, I think it would be fair to just make that a special permit, that way the neighbors get notified, and if somebody has a problem with it, they can show up.
Yep.
Um, I, I mean, that, that's my general view on a lot of things, it's like.
I mean, we also could wait for them to come to us and be like, hey, we can't do this, can you change?
Yeah, we could.
I mean, I don't know, like, cause, I mean, that is always an option.
Right.
Um, and I don't know what the appetite is for, like, you know, Valley kitchens, I feel like one of the components of this is it has to be a freestanding sign.
Okay.
So I don't know if they would have the space for that, cause I feel like the, I mean, I, I don't wanna get too focused in on one thing.
Right, and this is always just what I do, though, is try and like, figure out.
Conceptualize what it's gonna look like in real life.
A specific, cause I do it with economics, too, is like, look at a specific agent and try and figure out, like, well, how would this work for them? Because if, you know, you sort of zoom back out, but, um, I, yeah, no, I mean, like, I think that that's a, to just say, like, you know, we're in the commercial districts, we're gonna allow them.
Brad, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I, I think so. Um, I just, knowing the, the public the way that I do, if there are any sorts of light pollution issues in residential areas, it just opens up a very large can of worms about angering homeowners. Um, I don't know what the impact would be, but I would imagine there's also, um, potential impacts to, you know, property estimation and homeowner value if there are large signs across the street from some, you know what I mean? So all of these things that get taken into consideration, that, I mean, I don't even really foresee this being much of an issue overall in the community, but at least to anticipate that this could be an issue, so let's just put the guardrails up so it doesn't become one, I think that's fine.
I mean, I think, so these have been around, I can't remember what year we did this originally, it was, I might say in here somewhere, um, 20, I don't know. But anyway, you know, these signs were relatively in their infancy, and I, I would say, it, we haven't seen a big demand of them wanting to come to town. Like, the only request that I'm aware of is the church.
Yep.
Um, other than the fire station and the school. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I think that if this was close to somebody, we could have NIMBY issues for sure. Uh, I think that, you know, there's kind of a broader push, not necessarily within East Hampton, but in, around about like, light pollution, and, um, and we don't necessarily wanna contribute greatly to that, which, which will bring me to some of the other things in here. Um, but I do think that there are commercial areas are the places where these probably would go. And I also believe that since it's a freestanding sign, we're probably looking at people replacing signs with, like, that are already freestanding, already existing, probably already lit, with, with a sign that maybe has more capability.
That's what I was gonna say, that it's probably already lit, is, you know, I lived next to something like this when I lived in Virginia, and I lived back to a church, and they had one of these.
Yeah, yeah.
And whatever light pollution was related to that, was nothing compared to the streetlights.
The streetlights.
Right, which were there, like, just in terms of lumens, like, if you turned off all the streetlights and you just had the LED signs saying, here's when our services are, and here's where the pantry is open, and whatever. You wouldn't be able to walk around it, like, you wouldn't be able to see, it's not, it's, it's not like a lot of lumens, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm, I mean, I, I wanna be cognizant of, you know, folks with light pollution stuff, but if you're on a road that has cars up, going up and down it, sidewalk that's illuminated, you're already talking about 100 times more light being produced than this thing could ever produce, even if you just set the entire thing to just be a big white screen.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, 100%, so. Um, so as we kind of move down, we get to operation and controls, uh, and so one of the pieces in there that I didn't touch at all was the changes. And this was something that I remember we pulled out from model ordinance back when we originally did this, which was, the duration of each message shall be at least 30 seconds, which is recommended by the US Department of Transportation. Transition of messages should be less than one second, so it should be an instant change, it shouldn't scroll, or it's an, and I think it says, a change of message must occur, must occur simultaneously on the entire face. Message shall not contain flashing, animation, scrolling, rolling, or running image letters, um, cause that can distract drivers. Brightness is the second piece of this. So the sign's brightness must have the ability to respond to changes in ambient light levels. Uh, signs shall be equipped with brightness dimming controls, brightness levels must be no more than federal highway standards. Which is pretty, I think these, these signs are, the way that they make them, they take the standards into account, and they, and they kind of make them to fit within those. Um, and then, this part, I thought we could probably strike. So I wanted to put this out to see if we wanted to remove this part, cause those, both of those previous parts, I think are reasonable.
Yep.
Um, but this is section 3, non-message and background lights shall be off. Message lights shall be one color. And I feel like the way that signs have evolved, is they've been able to evolve where they can have different colors and not be super distracting or super, you know, I feel like the school sign is kind of an example, I drop out all the time, there's like, all sorts of colors on that thing.
Right.
And it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal.
Yeah.
Um, you know, because the signs are kind of, they're LED more, you know, less like dots of light, more like televisions.
Right.
You know, um, so I thought that we didn't necessarily have to say, well, your background has to be off, and the lights only have to be one color. Like, so it would be a black background with red light.
Right, right.
Cause you might have some, a situation where, you know, they have a higher-end sign that has multiple colors, and it looks fine.
Yeah, I mean, it comes to mind to me, like, if you had, um, like, you know, so you're talking about this, like, a, you know, school or the church or something, they might, they might have kind of like a flyer, like a graphic design for like, a thing that they've, that's going on.
Right.
You know, or even the city, you know, they could just have like, you know, we have graphics that we share for, you know, uh, cultural chaos. So why shouldn't you be able to put the cultural chaos flyer up there?
And I could, and I could see like, the fire department sign, you know, having like a, or, you know, it's like Police Appreciation Day, it's like, blue and black or whatever, and they have like a badge or some, you know, like, it could be something, like, probably relatively harmless, it's not gonna distract drivers, that's, you know, I think that we don't necessarily have to say that all background lights have to be off, and they can only be one color. That was just my initial thought when I read that.
Right.
Um, but, you know, if you guys, I'm, I'm happy to leave it, and we can go back to it, or we can do more research on it, or whatever. Um, but that was my initial thought, was that we probably don't need that piece.
I mean, just broadly, I think, you know, with what you said earlier about sort of DOT specifications, that's something that I'm pretty comfortable about, because that's people whose, like, jobs it's been to study this, and what the actual risks are involved.
Right.
And so I feel like if they're saying, well, these are the specifications that you should follow to not be distracting the drivers, then those are probably the specifications that you should follow to not be distracting the drivers. And if they haven't said something that a background can't be green, then, or, you know, maroon when, you know, East Hampton wins something.
Right, exactly.
Then like, to me, that, I feel okay about that.
Yeah, and, and we know that that is not, just from, you know, I think all of our shared experience, probably driving on the highway and seeing, you know, LED billboards, we know that it's not like a blank background with just one color text.
Right, right.
You know, there is like, you know, multiple things happening on those billboards in multiple colors, and it's on the highway.
Yeah.
You know, people going very fast, so I feel like, I, I felt comfortable with striking that, but, um, what do you think, Brad?
I mean, I, to me, the only thing that we just need to make sure about, which we just discussed, and as long as this stays in place, is, um, like rapid changing of colors on signs is, is the big no-no for people that have, you know, either people who are neurodiverse, uh, you know, people with autism, or people with epilepsy. If it's a, if it's the rapid changing is what's the problem.
And so this would be, there would still be no flashing, so it would have to, it would go from one static image to another static image?
That's, I think that's fine.
So I think that that's probably okay, okay, so I'm gonna leave that as, I'm gonna take the question mark out of strike. Um, so the next one, location. One message center shall be permitted per property in allowed districts. That seems to make plenty of sense.
Okay.
Good. Uh, locations shall conform to all other regulations with regard to freestanding signs. And electronic messaging centers must be freestanding signs.
Right, okay.
Um, the allowable working sign area of an electronic messaging center shall be limited to no more than 75% of the allowable max area of a sign in said zone. So basically, it would have to have a border, you know, it would have to be a sign within a sign. So, and I think that's pretty standard.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I'm, you know, for some reason, this says that that was updated, no, that can't be. Cause 9/26/2023 is when, that's when we added the municipal exemption, that must have just like, when I cut and pasted into this doc, it must have gotten put here. Um, but, uh, I feel that most signs would probably conform to that already, because, like, let's just say if we're a church, we're probably gonna have in static letters the name of the church above the sign, and below the sign is gonna be the electronic messaging center.
Yeah.
Um, and so it probably won't even be close to 75%. That, you know, it'll probably be, you know, a, a normal sign, you know, a 3x5 sign with like, a, you know, a 2x3 underneath, or something like that. Um, so that's one, we, if we feel like we need to go back to, we can, but I, I, it seemed pretty reasonable, and it was, it's already in there, so it's something we don't have to change if we don't need to. Um, so, but I'm happy if you guys, with any of these, cause what I'll do with this is, once I'm done, I'll send it to you guys, and to review, to, you know, sometimes you need to marinate a little bit on the ideas, and like, and if we need to come back to that, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, so this is number four, which is, uh, EMC sign messages may relate only to goods and services offered on the premises. Now, I was thinking about that, and I think that that's probably, like, if we're talking about, like, say, a church or something, well, if you are talking about your announcements for like, when your services are, then that's your goods and services, right? So, it, it is kind of a broad enough thing that I think it could apply to most of the things, I just wanted to, I wanted to bounce it off you guys, just to make sure I was missing something.
So let's just say, though, as an example, and this is, this is where it kind of becomes a slippery slope, but let's say, you know, our softball team dominates again.
Okay.
And, you know, they're on their way back home, and businesses wanted to change their signs to basically congratulate them, or whatever.
So I'm gonna award you the award of Captain Segway.
Okay, cause that's what you're gonna talk about after.
So, what I put in was, um, public service announcements. Owners of message center signs and digital displays are required to coordinate with local authorities to display, when appropriate, emergency information important to the traffic public, including amber alerts, silver alerts, weather, or other emergency information. We could broaden that.
Right.
To say any community, you know, message that isn't, you know, is deemed important, or, or whatever, you know? So, um, because I felt like it was, I was like, you know what, if we have these signs around, and we can use them to inform more people of things, like, that should be one of the benefits that the city gains from allowing these.
Right, right.
You know, like an amber alert, that obviously, that's like, or the mountain, the mountains closed.
Right.
You know, all these things are things that I think could be like, and I have a feeling that people that are, you know, for example, if it was a church and partnered with us, and we, you know, if the mayor was like, hey, you know, we, is it possible when you're not displaying your sign, like, we need to let people know the mountain's closed?
Mm-hmm, right.
Like, and they're like, well, that's part of the agreement we made, but, you know.
Okay, I think that's fine, I, I, and I think that the idea of saying, like, and doing, you're agreeing that, like, in the case of an emergency, we can ask you to use your sign, or blah, 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 I think that makes a lot of sense. When it comes to the goods and services on-site thing, my only thing about that, like, I think that's a, it's a reasonable ask, just like, person to person, business to business. I, I worry that if somebody decided that they wanted to use their sign to make a, make a joke, or do whatever, um, or say, vote for so-and-so, like, and you were to say, hey, we told you that that's only for goods and services. I have this feeling that if it ended up in court, they would say that it's a First Amendment issue, and we'd lose, because we've had these issues around, uh, regulating the content of signs before, and it hasn't gone well for municipalities historically.
Right, and I think one of the reasons why that was in there, and I agree with you, um, and I think was to avoid advertising for other, like, you know, letting people advertise on their sign for other places.
Right.
And honestly, I think you're, like, I think if this, this is a free speech issue, but like, we can, uh, like, we can regulate the time, place, and manner.
Right.
And I think that if we get into regulating the content, that puts us on a different level, so.
I mean.
I think we should, there's probably a way for us to be able to say this within ordinance that would make it non-binding, that would allow for us to get that message across, you know?
Cause I think, I think then about like, okay, say you're a bar.
Yeah.
Well, bars cover themselves in signage, they're products.
For products.
Not all of them, but many of them do. So what happens when Coca-Cola, or Budweiser, or something gives them a call and says, hey, we'll give you some money if, you know, every hour your sign shows Coca-Cola logo for a couple minutes? Now, we might say, well, we don't love that, but then with a building, I would say, well, do you truly have the?
The authority.
The authority to tell me that I can't enter into a legitimate business agreement with Coca-Cola to have their advertising? You know, any more than you would to say that I couldn't put a Coca-Cola sign, like, uh, one of those tube signs up on my, in the glass of my, you know, place, but I'm just worried that, like, and, and, you might think that that's tacky, and I might agree, but I do worry that we would probably lose that if that went to a lawsuit. And I, I just kind of get a little nervous about writing things that I think we would probably lose if we actually tried to enforce it.
And we also said may relate, only to girl, we didn't say must relate. We said may.
Yeah.
So I mean, ah, this, so this becomes one of those, um, you know, cause we have an idea of what we feel like the, the context of the sign should be used for, but do, since legally, we don't have the, the authority to go against the First Amendment, do we just leave that piece out?
Let me mind, well, cause here's another one. What happens when a church gets one and starts putting up Bible passages that are kind of relevant to like, an issue going on in the world right now?
Right.
You know, like, they're kind of weighing into that. You're not gonna be able, whether or you think, you're not, you're not touching that with a 10-foot pole, so like, why even empower us to do something that we're not gonna actually do?
So you think even this idea of goods and services should not even be discussed at all?
Well, cause would the Bible verses be goods and services? No, they're just, they're, you know, a church could easily use that, as, and many churches do, if you see their signs, even just their stick-up, the magnetic signs. They'll use them to, a message and say, hey, you know, the, the, there's the church on, on, you know, uh, East Street, and they're, they've always got some message up that, that they want people to hear about, you know, their message and whatever, and there's, so, so you can do that with a stick-up sign, but not an LED sign? Like, I just feel like you.
So maybe I just take out this, I take out number four, but leave the public service announcements? Yeah, I think that makes sense, I think it makes sense to say, just say, public service announcements, and we can say owners of message center signs, um, and digital display, I'm, I'm just gonna keep it with EMCs, uh, to keep the wording, the whole same, all the way through. So electronic messaging centers, um, are required to coordinate, and I, I don't think that's a problem, because uh, quote with local authorities to display when appropriate, and I'll, you know what, I'll add into this, so emergency, uh, community announcements, emergency information, right, so I'll just add community, cause that way we cover the softball team, we did really well.
Yeah, well, I feel like the softball team should be, we shouldn't force them to put that.
No, no.
There's an amber alert, that's one thing, softball team wins, that's a different.
Yeah, right.
Like.
So, when appro, well, when appropriate.
Right.
And, and so I'll just say community announcements, and then I'll say also emergency, like.
Yeah.
Um.
Could we even still, though, because if this is, if this is their property, right, they will be the ones that purchase the signs?
Yeah.
Could we still mandate that they use their signs for an amber alert? I mean, so of course, this is, you know.
So I think, I think what we're saying here is they're required to coordinate to display when appropriate, and then it would be, you know, if, if they didn't feel it was an appropriate use of their sign, then they probably, there's, I don't, it's not like there would be a repercussion for them not doing it.
Right, okay.
We're just saying, hey, like, if you're gonna have one of these signs, and there's a community emergency, or there's a community thing, we might ask you to use it, like, I hope, we hope that you.
Right, okay, yeah, I, I, and that's why I say, I don't think this would even be a problem at all, I think, if there was a child somewhere in Western Massachusetts that was kidnapped, I think every business owner would be like, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, even if it meant like, having their, you know, uh, uh, open mic on Wednesday, not being up for a few hours.
Probably gonna be worse optics if you, you know, if someone complains about it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we.
Okay, that's great, um, now, number five is, in the, in mixed-use industrial districts, EMC is only permitted on properties with 100,000 square feet or more of floor area, I thought that could be a strike.
Cause that's very few places in East Hampton that have even qualified for, right?
Yeah, I mean, in some.
It's, it's arguably spot zoning at that point.
It really is, yeah.
You know, it's like, the, it's, it's like giving characteristics that only apply to like, to a building, so.
Exactly, um, so the next one is six, which is, EMC shall not be illuminated between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, or no later than operating business hours if beyond 11:00.
So when the business is closed, they should be off?
Yeah.
That seems reasonable to me.
Um, and, you, I mean, but if it's, you know, like, if it's the church, they can have their sign on from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. But at that, at that point, it would turn off. And, and I, it was funny, because I put that in on my own, I was like, 11 and 6? And, but it, then I went back and looked, and it was already there, it was 11 and 7? So, you know, the time, I think, could be pretty flexible. Um, but that piece was in there, and I was like, hey, 11 to 7, seems totally reasonable, I'm fine with that. So that part, and then, that's, and honestly, that's the entire EMC ordinance, right there.
Right.
Now, the only thing that I felt like we should, um, delve into, was the idea of by right, or by, um, you know, special permit, site plan approval, for, like, what do we want, what kind of hoops, what kind of money do we want people to have to go through in order to get one of these? I think is a, a relevant question, you know, a special permit obviously is gonna be more money.
Right.
Um, you know, if it's, if it's by right, they can just get a building permit for it.
Yeah.
Um, so, I wanted to put that out there, and I think that this, and I didn't, it's my fault, it's my, it's my, my work-life is insane these last few months, it's, um, public schools are in a very interesting place right now, that's, I'll keep it at that. But, I didn't reach out to Jeff, which I think is probably the appropriate thing to do on this question. Um, because I think he could give us some insight around whether he feels that this could be a special permit, or by right, you know? But I wanted to make sure that we discussed that piece, at least, so it was on the record.
Yeah.
Um, so, I just thought, thoughts off the top of our head, and then we can kind of check in with him and see what he says?
My thought is not special permit.
Okay.
If you wanna go by right or by right plan approval, I'm, I, I can see marriage, and my, my instinct would say by right, but, you know, if you wanna say site plan approval, there's, I, I can live with that. Special permit to me feels like a tool that municipalities abuse a lot. Like, you really shouldn't be having special permit conversations unless there's like, a really legitimate risk of some sort of harm being done, like, either physical or financial, like, harm to community or to individuals, and a sign that, like, it's just.
It's gonna be really similar to one that could already go.
Plenty of communities, I drive by a bunch of them every day, and it's never harmed me. And so, it just, to me, that just seems, and, and we've seen just what the special permit process can look like in terms of how easy it is to turn out, you know, some really potentially passionate people who, you know, can slow things down for months, and make it very expensive. And so, I just think if you wanna empower an individual to basically tell somebody else they can't do something on their property, which is what a special permit does, is it empowers basically any individual to just show up and slow a process down and make it extremely expensive. There's a time and a place for that, I don't feel that this is a.
I, I, I would tend to agree with that. Um, and, so, and I, so I, you know, I think probably for us, um, when we do talk to Jeff, I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm, I'm interested here what he has to say, but I think, um, site, you know, site plan approval, or by right, is, is, that seems more reasonable, and it's more in line with other signs.
Yeah.
So.
To me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna.
No, no, go ahead.
To me, by right makes sense, because I just don't feel like anything in here is actually technical enough that it requires site plan approval, like, I guess site plan approval for a building, for a sign, like.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I was thinking about was like, uh, the, the size of the sign, the brightness of the sign, making sure it conforms to the standards, like, making sure, you know, where they would have to present, like, here is the type of sign we're getting, it meets all NSTHA, uh, or NHTSA? uh, or N H T S A, National Highway Standards.
Would they have to get that do that to get a building?
Uh, that I don't know the detail that they would need to get just to get the permit to put the sign up.
Right.
I I think they might just be able to describe the sign and the size of the sign to get the permit is my initial thought. But this this we can ask Jeff and and, you know, I think that that is, I I think we're off to a good start on this. Um, and so what I would do for this is I would, I'll just send what I have here to both of you so you can just take a look at it. And 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 just so we don't violate any open meeting things, I would make just make a copy of it, put your, if you have any thoughts or corrections on it, and then you could just email it to like our, the three of us. And we just don't discuss that by email, but we can see the changes that we thought were appropriate.
Okay.
Right? Because I think if we collaborate on the same document, I think that might be open meeting. But if we make a copy and we put some thoughts down and send it and we don't discuss that until a meeting, I think we're okay.
Right. I think that should be fine.
Yeah. So um, all right, good. Any other thoughts on this?
Yeah, I mean, I just, for me, I I don't know enough about permitting processes to make an informed decision other than I trust the planning department and the planning board. So whatever they feel is appropriate for this situation, especially since they're they're going to be the ones that are doing the work.
Right, the enforcers.
You know, I I have full um faith in that body to to tell us what the best thing is to do. So I'm I'm interested to hear what they say.
Yep.
I mean, on that note, I guess if we really wanted to, I'm not saying we have to do this. I'm not even saying we should do this. We could just pass this with saying it by right and then we're going to go to the planning board and they're going to have to weigh in.
Oh, true, because, yeah.
Public, like, you know, joint public hearing anyway.
That is true.
So you need to approve this before I can go on the back.
Because, yeah.
Right, so if we're going to have that discussion anyway, like, I I would be open potentially to the idea of just being like, well.
Yeah, like this is what we think. What do you guys think?
Yeah, and if we have to amend it on the spot, like, we can do that. Or or we can, you know, just consult with Jeff. That's also fine with me. I'm fine. I'm just saying like, we are going to, this will have to go into a room full of planning board people.
Right.
Who are going to get an opportunity to weigh in anyway. So I don't think we need to agonize too much.
We don't. No, that's a good point. I didn't even think about that, but you're you're absolutely right. That makes a lot of sense. Um, and in fact, I think it makes, so maybe on the twentieth, I might um, I might take the steps to bring this back to the council and send to the planning board so we can get a jump on it. I mean, might as well, right?
Yeah.
Um, because so we'll have to have, we'll just have a joint planning uh, meeting in the in the new year and um, we can kind of hash out some of those things, even though it's not fully vetted by, like, I'm still going to send it to you guys and I still would like to see your thoughts.
Yeah.
Um, but even though it's not fully vetted, we can kind of present the changes that we've made and it can morph as we meet with them if they see any glaring uh, you know, discrepancies here.
I think that makes sense, especially because it usually takes them a while to get something scheduled. So let's just get the ball rolling.
Let's get it rolling. I'm fine with that.
I feel bad that there's an like an actual like party in town that wants to do this. And that like we are what's holding them up. So
I know, I feel bad too.
There's just, pardon me, just have all the.
Just that's why I want to get this moving.
Going.
Yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense.
So I'll just get it scheduled.
Yeah. All right, that's awesome. Um, okay, so I'm going to send this to you guys right now.
Okay.
Um, and do how are we doing on minutes? Are we all counted up on minutes?
There is um, last meeting's minutes, which I was absent for.
Oh, okay.
And then there will be the one, I'm typing these up right now, so these will be ready for our next meeting.
Perfect. So the last meeting, I don't even, um, you know, I'll I can probably just go in and watch the video, make minutes.
Okay.
I'll just do that. I need to remind myself, set myself a reminder.
So do we need to do some sort of a closing out of the term?
Nothing formal.
Okay.
Um, if I.
Some of the committees are doing that this year, which I think new.
Yeah, it's new.
I think Barb was asking people.
I think some of the committees are like, have not submitted any minutes for the whole year or, yeah, for the whole year.
True, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um, but I think, you know, there's no, there's no reason why if we, if I can get these minutes done, well, we couldn't meet, like, I could set a meeting like five minutes before our next on the twentieth.
It's kind of what I was saying.
And we could just approve the rest of our minutes for the year.
Yeah, I'm I'm doing the same thing, just like a brief, like five or 10-minute meeting with the appointment committee to do the same thing, just to get everything in order.
I'm fine. I'm fine to do that if you guys are available a little bit before the.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Cool.
Maybe here. Yeah, five thirty, there wouldn't be half an hour or so.
Perfect. Awesome. All right. Um, well, I think that concludes our regularly scheduled program. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
We have a motion in second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.